Yeah, it was a whole lot easier to get in easily, wasn't it?
Could call the night meeting order, have their all call.
Kessler?
Here.
Kanega?
Here.
Burden?
Here.
Ebert?
Here.
Spinner?
Here.
Crum?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
I see the case to be given by a pastor there for with of the Hayesville United Baptist Church.
Let us pray. Holy and wonderful Lord, we thank you for calling us here tonight. And we ask, Lord, that you would give us the wisdom to make the decisions that you've called us to make and help us to be a blessing in this world as you have already blessed us. We pray all of this in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Praise your lady.
Praise your lady, to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start tonight with a special order business, a special award to council members to take the firm place of Jeremy Burden. We have four people that have submitted applications. We have Amber Chatwell, Jan Perten, Dennis Port, and Chris Forham. So what I think I will do is go ahead and open it to see if anyone would like to come and make any open remarks to the council. It's not required. We would give you that opportunity if anyone would like to come forward and make remarks. We have, they have your resume and the information is there, so it's not required at first point. Seeing no one jump up and run up there, we'll open the floor then for nominations for the award two council person's position.
Actually, can we ask you a question real quick?
Yes.
Jan, I know you've already filed. I was just curious, the other three people, was anybody planning on running for the seat that opens up?
Yes.
As it goes full time?
Yes.
Thank you.
Another question, council? If not, then the floor is open for any nomination. Mr. Fagan?
I would nominate Janet Parton for award two council person.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Jan, any other nominations? Anyone else at all? Point one. Ms. Crum?
I'd make a motion to nominate Amber Chatwell.
Second.
Motion to second to nominate Amber Chatwell. So we now have Amber and Janet. Anyone other council? Or do you want to make motion that nomination cease anywhere? Mr. Kessler?
Make a motion, we cease nominations.
Second.
Have a motion to second to cease nominations. Station, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Spinner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
So we have Amber Chatwell and Janet Parton, then that we'll be voting on tonight. So we will start out, all those in favor of Amber, please raise your hand. All those in favor of Janet, please raise your hand. Janet will be then seated as your new council person for award two. You'll be seated right now, Janet.
Congratulations, I'm going to be afternoon. I can swear. I do solemn swear that I will support, that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of council member award two.
Of the office of council member award two.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So customary to clap for appointment.
We'd like to thank the other Amber and Chris for truly applying, getting this many people. It is, I think it's a good thing to have more people truly want to get involved in the government. So we would, this position is open until the next election, which will be, if you want to run, you need to register by January, excuse me, June 1st for the August primary. And if we don't have enough, there won't be a primary. And then the election is actually in November and you'll be then seated in January, whoever wins. So if you're wanting to be interested, you would go to the election office down in the old courthouse downtown. And that's where you register for the positions by June 1st. And it is open, because this position will be open, same for voting, the same as yet before. We will be re-electing five new councils, re-electing five council, I knew they'll be, but re-electing five council come November of this year. Again, thank you for applying. We sure appreciate people being interested in getting involved and saying, thank you.
Thank you.
Then move to item B, unless, Jan, you want to take any time or you want to jump right in?
Jump right in.
Okay. Item B, presentation of mini MPA certificate to Rose Corby. We have Gail Martin, who is a WSU, who is a WSU project manager with the Uco Law.
Good evening. I, somehow I lost part of my voice this afternoon, so. Didn't go to any athletic games, so I don't know what that was. But anyway, it's nice to be here. I'm here at least once a year, usually if there's a person from the city of Hayesville in the program, it's the mini MPA program. We train mental managers and supervisors to usually get promoted within their organizations, which is a neat thing to watch the graduates grow. We started the program at Wichita State in 2001. We have about 460 graduates. We have between 27 and 35 in each class each year. Eight Friday mornings in the fall and eight in the spring. And teachers are either practitioners or faculty members from WSU. And we talk about all kinds of things, finance, human resources, strategic planning, a performance management, just a little bit of everything. And the fun thing for me, I've done this for nine years, is that we'll have law enforcement people, we'll have engineers, we'll have finance people. This year, we were fortunate to have someone who is the director of the zoo in Hutchinson. So you never know who's going to be in the class. And it's been a great year. This year, we had 34. The counties represented this year were Harvey, Finney, Sedgwick, Butler, and Marion Counties. The cities were Hayesville, Wichita, Hutchinson, and Derby. And every time I go out to make these presentations lately, people have said, who are the graduates from our city? So I did a search this afternoon, and I probably didn't get everyone, but this guy right here, Will Black, is a member of a recent class. Jeffrey Whitfield, Gina Morgan, and some guy over there on the end named Russ Kessler is, was in the program. And we do have appointed and elected officials. I will say, this is a deja vu for me, because I'll be retiring in May. And I've done the program for nine years and made a lot of good friends and also with other training that I do. Before I present this to Rose, I want to also say that this year, she helped us at the city clerk training. She came, she accepted my invitation to come up and teach about tiny houses. And it was a very popular session, so not only do I get to learn people in the community who are potential, they're also potential instructors for programs that we do at Wichita State. So I want to thank all of you for your support of Rose, and I'll, I'll give her her plaque if the mayor would like to come down and present it, or you want me to present it?
Yeah.
Okay?
You're better at it.
We'll do that. And so it's really fun to get to know Rose, so congratulations. Thank you very much.
Could you guys turn this way for both of us, please?
Oh, I wondered about that.
Photo shop.
Yeah.
Here, let me come over.
Thank you again.
Congratulations, Rose. Jared, you want to say, Rose?
Actually, I do.
You just opened Pandora's box.
I've been surprised that she did that.
I know. I do want to say that this was a great experience for me. I learned so much about the inner workings of the city and how all of the different departments actually work together. And, and I highly recommend it to everybody. I think everybody should go through this, because everybody would learn everything about our city and what we actually do. And we work hard. We really do. So thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, we want to introduce to item C, which is the bike month and bike to work day proclamation. This is proclamation that the bicycle look economics, healthy, convenient, economically sound form of transportation act on tool for recreation enjoyment, casual scenic beauty. So therefore, we would like to proclaim May 2017 as bike month in Hayesville. The week of May 15th as bike to work week, and May 19th as bike to work day. And urge all residents to join me in this special observance. And then also to come for the mayor's bike ride, which will be?
Thursday.
Thursday, May 18th.
It was like 16th, so I wanted to make sure we had it right this time, or we.
Conflict of graduation, yeah.
Okay. Any approval of that proclamation, council? Mr. Kessler?
Make a motion, we approve a proclamation of maybe the bike month, along with all the other days to.
Motion second to make a bike month, bike to work day proclamation. Question? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Spinner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Then item D, which is a Arbor Day proclamation. And it's in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Act of the Special Day to set aside for the planting of trees. And we are looking at observing this on May 3rd, 2017, as Arbor Day. So I urge all citizens to plant a tree, Latin heart, and promote the well-being of this future generation. We proclaim that as Arbor Day, May 3rd, 2017. Mr. Kessler?
Make a motion, we approve Arbor Day, proclaiming Arbor Day on May 3rd, 2017.
Second.
Motion second to approve the proclamation of Arbor Day, May 3rd, 2017. Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Spinner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Move the presentation for minutes, eight minutes of April 10, 2017. Mr. Fagan?
Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of April 10, 2017.
Second.
Motion second to approve April 10, 2017 minutes. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Spinner?
Yes.
Parton?
Upstate.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Upstate.
Item one, system to be heard, a Sedgwick County car department. They are not here. They show up, we will have them present. Item two, approval license and bond, nothing on the agenda. Item three, induction ordinance resolutions, nothing on the agenda. Item four, notice and communications, a government body announcements. Government, Ms. Crum?
Going out to library, they have their book list boogie with parents as teachers on Tuesdays from 10 to 11 in the morning. Story times are on Wednesday at 10:30. Their summer reading program, they're starting to take signups for that. It's called, this year it's called Build a Better World. They always have lots of activities. And if you can sign up and get certain goals, and you meet those goals, you'll get rewards from the library. Meepo Mayhem, Saturday, April 29th, that's their board game that they do, that's at 10:30 in the morning. They will have a, their next Monday movie night will be May 1st. And they're watching the movie Nerve, will start at 6 o'clock next Monday. On Tuesday, May 2nd, Horticulture Club will be mating, meeting. And the next Lego Club meeting is on May 11th. Then also wanted to mention something, the girls' swim team, I don't usually mention stuff like this, but the medley relay broke the school record this past weekend. And the reason that I wanted to mention that is because that record had been there since 1978. So the medley relay is made up of two seniors, a junior and a sophomore, all from campus. And they're the first girls' medley relay team to go under two minutes. They swam a 159.10. Just wanted to mention that.
As we just mentioned, the, you planned May as Arbor Day, sorry, May 3rd. The tree planting will be at the Randall Eldorado Park. Invite everybody, all the community to attend that. Again, that's next Wednesday, May 3rd at 5:15, tour by the footbridge. That was, that we just had a ribbon cutting a couple weeks ago. And that's next Wednesday and the following Saturday on May 6th, from 7 to 9. Come out and enjoy the Mudbugs Cajun and Zaydeko group, it's band. It's a, I understand it's a, it's a popular band, and a lot of people follow that band. So that's at Rigs Park at the Band Shelter, next Saturday on May 6th from 7 to 9.
Very good. Seeing no other announcements, we go on to item B. This is a thank you card from help by C.T. for a presentation that Zach had made. Item C, email from Cox Communication regarding channel changes. Bible business, we have nothing. Item six, other business, consideration of bids from the West Grand Turn Lane. For you, we've got the bids for the new turn lane that will be coming up.
Last Thursday, we had the bid letting for West Grand Turn Lane. We had three contractors submit bids. Corneo and Sons came in at 216,005.02 and 25 cents. Kansas paving was 210,006.50. And AIPAC Kansas came in at 196,990. We're asking authorization to move forward with AIPAC for a total of 196,990. And that is 55,000 underneath the engineer's estimate.
Questions, council? Ms. Kessler?
Make a motion to be approved, for the contract with AIPAC for 196,990.
Second.
Motion second to approve the AIPAC 196,990 for the construction of the turn lanes. Just to add information, this will be, is paid totally by the school, because it's the upgrading for the new construction being out there. This is not being paid by the city, it's paid by the school. But because it's being done in the city, we have to put out the bids. Other discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Spinner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
We're going to move on to the next item, which is the B, consideration of purchase of additional items for the Hayesville Activity Center.
Good evening, mayor and council. As you see in the packet, there's some, several items that we're trying to finish up on the activity center. Some things that came up that we didn't think of before, or just weren't able to fit in the budget at that time. The sound system for the activity center is one. This would be a speaker system that would go in the gym and in the cardio and the weight room. We'd be able to play music through there, possibly local radio stations, or also even the capability to do radio through the internet. And then page patrons, kids that need to be picked up, somebody come to the front desk, asking if they're there. We went out for several bids, there are quotes from different people. Several of them were not able to fit it in their timeframe. We are looking at contracting this to Electronic Contracting Company, can try to answer any questions that you might have.
Question, Ms. Crum?
Georgie, why are we going to wait until later to do the classroom? Why don't we just do the classroom when we're doing this, so that the whole building's done?
Just budget purposes right now. We're going to see if we could still fit that in a little bit later. Just this time, that's the amount that we were kind of going with, trying to get that done.
Did you get an estimate from them if you went ahead and added that now, I'm trying to?
It's an additional 36, $3,601.
If we do it a separate time, we're going to end up paying them to come back out again, so pay an extra service fee and all that other stuff, instead of just having them do it now?
It was quoted as just the one price. There wasn't additional fee for them to come back out, no. It's actually tied in together, but it's separate system in the room, so it won't actually play with the other system. Where you have the capability to add on down the hallway, or if we want to do something out in the lobby or something. But that system is actually separate, so that price should be just for that classroom.
Okay.
Mr. Spinner, question?
So this is just, right now, this is just the gym and the cardio weight room?
Yes.
And those are two separate systems?
Yeah, I don't have the layout in front of me, but if you remember for the activity center, there's 15 speakers that go in the sixth bay of the gym, and there's three that go in the cardio and the weight room. The cardio and the weight room alone is 3,300 square feet. And the gym area, of course, is two full-size gyms. So sizable area. The system was recently put, the same company put it into Derby North in their concessions auditorium. I know the Soul District, they're also using them in the new Tri-City Hayesville High School system for what they're putting out there.
I'm, I'm, I have to agree a little bit with Councilman Crum, that if we can, if we can go another $3,000 or $4,000 now and get speakers in the rest of the building, that might be, that might be a bargain compared to what it may be to go tearing up stuff later. Sometimes, once you finish up construction,
That's what.
then it, it gets a lot more invasive to go back in and add speakers. So that's why I was wondering if it's, would the future expansion be yet another system? That's why I was kind of curious if this was not one system.
If we added speakers down the hallway, that would be an add-on to what we, this price right here, the 16,787, probably be maybe four, six speakers, not as many. And they wouldn't be quite the size or the capability of what we're putting in the gym or the cardio weight room, just because of the area you're trying to cover. It will be 21 days before we can get the system in, just for the materials being able to get in. So it will be something that will probably be completed after the building's open.
I think the main reason is just trying to maintain budget. Mr. Fagan?
Yeah, it's kind of an old question that comes up anytime there's a big discrepancy here. We are talking about the same system between Whiplash Entertainment and Electronic Consulting, correct?
Yeah, the speakers are being used by Electronic Contracting, we're the same as McLean Sound. They couldn't fit it in their time schedule, but they are community speakers. Whiplash Entertainment is JBL's, a little bit higher price for the branding that you're paying on the speaker. But the community speakers are common ones that are used in this type of environment. And I've checked with Derby North, they have had really good luck with them, no problems. They highly recommended them.
Well, that's just what I was looking for, was just an explanation of the discrepancy in the price, but.
Smaller company.
Yeah.
Higher labor.
Sergeant?
Well, I'm kind of with Mr. Banner and Crum. And I understand it kind of puts you in a quadrant right now, Georgie, but you just made a comment that it's going to be put in after the construction is finished.
Yeah, that's something I could bring back here. We should have two council meetings before they're even, or at least one or two council meetings, I could bring it back if something you guys want to look at before they're even completed, so.
Well, that's what I was just getting ready to say, that's what I was getting ready to ask you, if we could table this, if there was no real big rush, if this was something that we could table and bring back with the additional. Because I know that once the construction is completed, and then you go in and you start tearing up to put in new stuff, that turns into a nightmare. And the other thing too is, you can have a price increase on those speakers between now and then.
Do you need it?
So the.
Do you need it, Georgie?
The sound system we do need in the facility, we would like to get that in. The conduit and the boxes.
Do you need the system in the classroom?
We don't need it right away.
Well, are you going to need it in the classroom? I'll rephrase.
Eventually, yes.
Then may as well get it right now.
Okay.
Even though I don't want it now, because of budget constraints, basically. This, this building, when you see the amount that we are spending over and above what the actual contract is, that's the problem with budget constraints. If the council feels they want to spend the money, then now's the time to do it. Mr. Fagan?
Just one more question along that lines. Could we, while we're getting pricing on this, could we see what it would cost to install the speakers and the wiring and not hook it up to an additional system? Because that's probably going to be the most of your labor when we go in a year or two now and start trying to drop more sound equipment in there.
I really don't know if we'll need additional speakers down the hallway in the lobby. I really don't. It's just the front lobby where we're walking in. The weight room area where we're going to be working out, this will cover that. This will cover the gyms, this will cover the walking track. The wellbeats room where we do our studio, our classrooms for fitness classes, has its own system. And the classroom where we teach classes is the only additional one. That's why I was saying, we could add that. Like I said, it will be here in June before they're able to complete this. I would have time, we could look at the budget and see where we're at at that time and still add that. So that's what I was saying, that we could wait on that additional system.
Then one other question that I've, and then I'll stop. Can we see if the system that we're pricing today has capability to drive additional speakers, should we want to put them there?
It does. I checked.
It does, okay.
What's your, what's your bid on the other, Georgie, for the bathroom?
3601. It's 3,601.
So if council is wanting to add the 3601, you need to add that to your 16787 for your full amount, if you want to approve that, council?
$28,388.
It's still 5,000 cheaper than for other bids.
Mr. R.
I make a motion that we go ahead and do the additional speakers and equipment and stuff that needed for the amount of 20,001 to 3?
380.
380.
388.
380.
Second.
Motion second to approve the electronic contracting bid with addition of the speakers for the bathroom? Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Spinner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Also here, you're going to see there's a change order in the amount of 15,233, excuse me, 16,756.85. This was already approved, because if we had not approved it, it would have put the ordering of the material that much farther behind. So we only approved it in our emergency approval. This was done because the floor, when they went to put the wood floor down, it would not pass. not have the humidity that would done it, would, that it needed. You're running in the ninety-some percent humidity range. If you'd have put that wood floor on that concrete, you'd add a nice floor like they have over in, uh.
Nelson School. Yeah, Nelson School.
So we have to order the additional underlayment, which ends up adding another sixteen thousand, seven fifty-six, eighty-five on top of your twenty thousand you just, just approved for the, uh, Activity Center.
Now you tell us.
It would right in front of you all the time.
Just to clarify what the Mayor said, it's not actually wood floor, it has a wood look to it, that's why the Mayor's gonna make sure it looks like wood. It's kind of vinyl flooring, it's actually tarchet.
Either way, it would have warped.
It's not wood.
No matter what kind of floor it was, it would have warped.
It had an indoor skates.
It had a real problem, we had to have to replace it again. Um, okay, uh, where are we here?
We already approved that though, right, so we don't have to do?
No, it's already approved under our emergency, so it's already figured. We just, we, uh, emergency, we need to notify you when we do that.
Okay.
That's your notification. We'll move on then to item C, consideration contract for root control with Duke's Root Control.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, before you and I, I have an agreement with, uh, Duke's Root Control. Um, we utilize them as a chemical treatment in our city sewer system to treat, uh, tree intrusion. Um, this will probably most likely be the last year we do this, we usually treat just the rear easements, uh, after this treatment, we'll have hit those, uh, we usually come right after and do the CIPP liner after that. Um, they've also honored the same price since two thousand twelve, so we're looking at doing nine thousand, three hundred, three hundred and sixty-five feet this season, um, so I'm asking authorization to move forward with Duke's Root Control for a total of twelve thousand, eighty dollars and eighty-five cents.
Canega?
Uh, I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, contract with Duke's for twelve thousand, eighty dollars and eighty-five cents.
Second.
Bush second to approve the root control as presented. Discussion? Mr. Crum?
Tony, so does that mean that we have done the whole city in five years?
Rear easements was our first initial priority, so yes.
But you're not looking at using them for anything else?
The, the front easements were able to get to fairly easy, so we can do those with our Ritzall or anything like that, so no.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion from Councilor? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Canega?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Move item seven, department reports, A, administrative services.
Hey, I have a few announcements about upcoming events. This Friday, the Hayesville High School will be working within the community during their Community Service Day between the hours of eight and eleven AM. So if you see, uh, students out this Friday morning, then you'll know that they're working, doing community service projects. This Friday night, the Dayer Celebration will be held at Hayesville West Middle School from six to seven forty-five. This Saturday, Hayesville PD is, uh, having another drug take-back. It'll be this Saturday from ten AM to two PM in the front lobby of the police building. For, uh, details on this, it's for prescription and over-the-counter medicines for either humans or pets. Uh, people do not have to peel off labels before they turn in their bottles, they're, the bottles will be incinerated, packaged and all. Do not bring needles or EpiPens and this is the eighth year Hayesville PD has participated in the program. Next announcement, the National Day of Pride will be on Thursday, May fourth and it's usually held outside in the parking lot here at City Hall from noon to about one. If we do have inclement weather, we can move it inside. On May sixth, Pride is, uh, working with the Hayesville Police Department to have a car safety sa- check, car seat safety check and that's on May sixth, Saturday, from nine AM to one PM, it'll be in the parking lot here in front of City Hall. And the last thing I have is, we have a new website up now and if you've been to the website, hopefully you've noticed the changes. We're trying to make it where it's easier to get to things and also be mobile friendly since we're seeing, uh, it's just, you know, worldwide, mobile searches are the way of the future and so our previous website was not the easiest to get around if you're on your phone. This new one is still under construction, we wanted to get it out there and get going with it, but if you see something that's not working or if your, uh, Council bio doesn't look correct, just let us know that we'll get it changed.
Item B, safe arcade. Item D, road work time. And item E, registration.
So I have several announcements too, I think my list is longer than yours. This weekend, we have a, um, art show going over at the Historic District, it is Seaview on the Labels, so it's a special fundraiser for USD Special Education Classrooms, um, on Friday and this Friday will be from four to eight PM, Saturday, ten to five. They'll have entertainment over there, different things for people to do and then art for sale, so if you have time, stop over there and help them out. The Splash Pad will be opening on May first, it'll be open daily from nine AM to ten PM. We have lots of summer camps that we're registering for, soccer, basketball, we have father-son camp out, mother-son camp out and then the Spark Program that we'll be, we're, working with in conjunction with the school. Um, there's a special event tomorrow at the middle school from five to seven PM, it's a summer preview. Registration will be taken there for that and then other middle school programs that will be going on. And then, of course, we have pool sales still going on at the Activity Center, the pool is set to open on Saturday, May twenty-seventh. That's all I have.
I forgot one. My role is, uh, filling in for chief. The visiting officer, Officer Mullins is here, so if you, uh, you probably met him on the way in, say hi to him on the way out.
Item A, appointments, we have none. Item nine, office business to be heard, anyone that would like to come forward and speak to the Council now's the time. Seeing none, we go item ten, exact location, we have none scheduled. Item eleven, bills to be paid, A, bills to be paid for the last half of April. Ebert?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we pay the last half of April bills.
Second. Bush second to pay the last half of April bills. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Canega?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item twelve, ten and ten, do we have nothing? Item thirteen, item A, Council concerns. Mr. Crum?
Uh, I had a couple more thoughts and in the last meeting, we talked about some capital outlay stuff and you said we could, we can keep opening up. Uh, went over and took, uh, pictures before prom over in the Historic District and parked in the, uh, parking lot on the west side of Hay Street over there in Rosemont and, uh, that's not really much of a parking lot anymore.
Uh, it was, it was, uh, a chip sealed anyway and it needs to be repaired.
So I, I would put that on the list because I was in really bad shape. And then I was also, uh, something that's kind of popping up in other cities and stuff and I know the real popular is a dog park and I know that takes land. Um, I know we've got some land in some different places and I didn't know if maybe that would be something we could research to see if maybe we could get a dog park somewhere.
I think it's, um, in our consultants, discussion of the people is mentioning to see if that surfaces also, so we'll see what kind of, of, uh, response we can get from people out there. It is, it is something I know that has popped up more than once.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Mr. Kessler?
Uh, issued a couple complaints as far as, uh, sand in the debris and the gutters, um, along the streets, around, around the city, um, especially in the Port Four area. Complaints I've been receiving, but even on grand, I've seen a lot of sand and stuff along the gutters, uh, on corners. Uh, people riding bikes, you know, they can slip on that or motorcycles, they can slip on that, turning a corner. But, um, do, how often do we use a street sweeper to go around the city?
We do it every fall. Um, we did have, earlier this year in twenty seventeen, both sweepers were down, so we're kinda behind there, but we can definitely hit those areas and, you know.
You do it in the spring after, cause I know a lot of it deals with the sand that's laid down during the, uh, winter time and also some of, even along the second street, uh, where it's resurfaced or whatever's put on it, you know, you throw the sand out there from the driveways, a lot, a lot of that sand is still out there also.
Right, and that's a procedure we're looking at changing this year with our vendor not doing that, maybe just closing the road down as that, so it recovers dries, so it doesn't leave that mess. But yeah, um, every fall we do do it and then we do it based on the winter we had, whether we had a lot of sand and salt down when we go out there, but.
One of the problems with the, uh, street sweeper is when they were, uh, tree sweeping and it's kicking, uh, and leaving a, a line, so they had the sweeper in and were repairing it so we wouldn't have that line being kicked out from the curb they own there. So that was one of the reasons we had to put it behind on that sweep.
So are they both down, you said, or just one?
They were, one upside, so.
So it's something you'd be able to do this, this spring?
Yeah. Mr. Binner?
Yes, I was at the last senior center meeting and, um, several of the members had mentioned that we do not have a security system over there, none whatsoever, nor do they have a fire alarm and I brought that up before. Is there a reason? I mean, we need.
There's none in the ceilings at all, for crying?
Nope.
Typically, typically fire sprinklers are based off the square footage of the building and the consumers, that's based off of, um, I know the Activity Center has it, um, yeah, everything I know about is based off the square footage of the building.
So they didn't put money in the building, the building was built basically because it didn't meet the requirements there?
Right.